Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the February 28, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a student matter, CSEA, and administrative contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. There are none. We are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the February 28, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. We are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the February 28, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, and please state your first and last name. It does not appear that we have any public participation. Okay, so moving on to my update. Congratulations to our high school debate team on a great performance the weekend of February 17 through the 19th at the Harvard University's National Championship Tournament, and we had several debaters place in the top 50, as well as they also had an excellent performance the week of February 23rd through the 25th, the National Digital Speech and Debate Series Tournament. So these debaters are constantly traveling and constantly placing, and it's super impressive. The art department is pleased to announce that several students are participating in the 2024 Young Artists Exhibition at the Katona Museum, so that is also very exciting. Moving on to athletics, the cheer team earned the NHSCC Small D2 Game Day National Championship in Disney. I think that's a first for us, correct?
It's a first.
Yeah, so congratulations.
Great cheerleaders.
Yeah, congrats. Very impressive. The boys' swimming team, several, the 200 and 400 freestyles relays finished 10th in the section, Aiden Grant finished 10th in the 200 freestyle and 11th in the 100 freestyle, and the team finished 15th out of 30 in the section. So congrats to our boys' swimming. This is also super exciting. Sienna Kazali won the 100-pound Eastern State Championship and finished sixth in the Section One Tournament. I think that's another first.
That's definitely a first.
Yes, congrats to Sienna. The boys' basketball won their outbracket game versus Yonkers and played Suffolk in the first Section One Class AA Tournament round on February 16th. And our girls basketball had a very successful run. Junior Mia Strazza and Senior Stella Perini both reached a prestigious 1,000-point club. The girls defeated Poughkeepsie in the first round of the Section One Class AA Girls Basketball Tournament, and then they moved on to defeat HPC in the quarterfinals. Unfortunately, Mia was out for the season and wasn't able to participate in the last game with a torn labrum, but the girls lost in the semifinal against Ursuline. The boys' bowling won their league title and represented Harrison as a team at the Section One Bowling Tournament, and the boys' track team had an outstanding number of performances in the Section One Class A Championship and placed fourth out of 12 teams. The girls' track team, Mary Gilmore actually broke the school record with the high jump of five feet, and Amelie Eskamelia is heading to the Nationals in the 55 hurdles, so best of luck in that. And our hockey team won the league title and are the two seed going into sectional play, and then they lost unfortunately in the finals yesterday in a close game in Clarkstown. Maxey won Lo-Hud Player of the Week. I voted for Max for February 12th, so congrats, Max.
Good job.
Yes. Oh, and then we also have, thank you, Kelly. We had two Division One college signings, Bianca Minickello and Danielle Casoles committed to Hofstra for cheer, and they will be signing their letters of intent on Wednesday, April 3rd, at 2:45 PM at the high school. So congrats, ladies. And as always, I just remind everyone to keep an eye on the district calendar. There are so many happenings, and we have our high school musical, the weekend of March 8th, and what else? Yeah, just a lot of PTA meetings for parents and PT Council, a lot of things happening. So as always, keep an eye on the district calendar, and I hope everyone enjoyed their break, had some restful time away, and are back at it at school. But Dr. Will, moving on.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few people in the audience tonight who we can't wait to hear from and see. I have a lengthy update, but I'm going to forego that part of the meeting until after we get you people home to bed. So thank you for being here. This is my favorite time of year, and that's true because I love, I've never missed a show, and so proud of everything that we accomplish as a Fine and Performing Arts Department. I don't know how Mrs. Test is awake. I don't think she ever sleeps, but she is tireless and amazing. But I'm going to ask Matthew Royal, our Director of Fine and Performing Arts, who has done a magnificent job in his first two years, to come on up and introduce these magnificent people.
Can I always say I've got the best job because I just get to introduce all these wonderful things?
I might agree with you about that, just saying.
It's pretty good. But I'm happy to announce that the Harrison High School Footwear Players are presenting Mean Girls the Musical next weekend, March 8th, 9th, and 10th at the HPC, based on the popular movie. Mean Girls follows teenager Katie Heron as she leaves her life in the African savanna and learns to navigate the unique and sometimes treacherous pecking order of her new school in suburban Illinois, led by the charming but ruthless Regina George. A huge thank you to the incredible directors, Megan Test and Debbie Totita, pit director Thomas Bastone, technical director Noah Platt, and of course, the entire cast, crew, and orchestra for all of their incredible work and the insane number of hours that they have put into this show, and it's a show you will not want to miss next weekend. Showtimes are 7:00 PM on Friday and Saturday and 2:00 PM on Sunday, with tickets sold at the door. Parents, please be aware, though, that like the film, the show does contain some PG-13 content, so just plan accordingly for that. As a special preview tonight, we have Jaden Schwartz, who plays Regina George, and Elvis Draguna, playing Aaron Samuels, performing Someone Gets Hurt from Mean Girls the Musical.
Okay. You guys, are you going up on stage? Because we'll go down in the, okay. We're going to go into the front row because we want to see your smiling faces.
Me? I thought you were done talking to me last summer when you started talking to Shane Omen.
Don't be weird. Okay, so you know how that Katie girl just like showed up here tonight?
She's not crashing. I invited her.
No, I know, but just like be careful because she has a huge crush on you.
Really?
Don't be gross. She's my friend, and she's really babyish and experienced and, wow, I didn't think that this would be so hard for me. Just promise me you won't break her heart like you did mine.
Wait, what's happening?
Yes, I look perfect, ice queen, that's what you see, that's what they all expect from me, but it's all show. Face it, you used me. You saw the sexy clothes, my supermodel pose. What did you know? Was I a game to you? Was I a way to be cool? I truly cared. Was I the fool? It's fine for you. It's fine to flirt. It's fine till someone gets hurt. Till someone gets hurt. Feel my heart beating. I'm just like her or you. People forget I'm human too. Yes, they do that. This is performance. This is all self-defense. I thought you had a sense to see through that. Was I too proud with you? Was I too cold and forbidding that you chose her over me? Are you kidding? Poor little me, all trapped in this fabulous show. You could set me free, but if you're going, go. It's fine for you. It's fine to flirt. And God, your heart, why do you even wear a shirt? No, it's fine. Damn, you're fine. And it's fine till someone gets hurt. Till someone gets hurt.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. You'll definitely see us all at your show. We're very proud of you. Great job. I still wish we'd get a little bit more, but I guess Mrs. Test.
We're going to have a second for questions.
All right, well, we'll give you another chance anytime you want. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You can all go home if you want because we're going to carry on, or you can stay because we're going to have a great presentation about the writing center.
No, no, go home.
They might want to hear about the writing center. So that was just one example of the kind of quality work that our teachers do with our phenomenally talented and devoted student body. But in my many years as superintendent, the program I'm about to introduce has always been an aspiration unachieved, an actual program that is fully led by students working with other students, helping them to do better at the craft of writing. And it has required a tremendous amount of work on the part of many of the people that you're going to meet tonight. But to see it actually take fruition, and I've had the opportunity to observe it firsthand, I was enormously impressed with both the quality and the shift that it's going to make in a school culture, when students see each other as allies and supporters of each other's growth. And I know we'll hear more about the growth that this produces on both sides of this, both the recipient and the person doing the work. So I'm going to invite Dr. Kanter up tonight and going to tell us a very glorious story. I can't wait to hear.
Very excited to share this story with you tonight. And we actually, we're English teachers, so we want to start the story actually at the end. So we're going to show you a quick video of what it looks like inside our writing center so you can imagine it. I'm pressing it. Dr. Ladwick. Thank you.
I still feel like helping. They don't learn it's only bad.
All right. You want to try to fix that sentence? Now we're through every structure.
I think maybe I should.
You want to read your op-ed in a second?
I should also revise her, let the others do.
Okay, awesome. See, this is describing the scene, setting of, it'd be kind of more shadowy than I would think, great special reflection, put them through with their batteries. I think that works perfectly fine. It's really good. Ideas are all very solid.
So we wanted to start this story at the end, and I'm actually going to introduce Mr. Corby Reif to share what's happening behind that story, so you know what, all the moves he made.
Hello, I'm Corby Reif, and you just saw about a 38-second snippet of a 20-minute tutoring session, and I would love to show you the entire thing, but we don't have the time, so instead I'm going to have to run you through some highlights of what happens in a tutoring session in the writing center. The very first thing, from the moment they come in, we greet them, we guide them to a seat, we have them sit down, we always sit next to whoever we're tutoring, and as you could see in the video, we keep our body turned towards them, body language open. It shows that we're engaged with their writing, that we're invested in it, that we care about it. Then throughout the course of a tutoring session, you'll hear a lot of what I like to call mirror talk. In this video, you hear me paraphrasing back to her the ideas that she was discussing in her piece and the ideas that I saw in her piece. It helps to make sure that we're on the same page, that I really understand the idea that she is trying to convey. I'll ask a lot of questions to allow her to, or to allow anyone who's in the writing center really, to arrive at their own answers rather than just giving them my answers or my writing. It helps them build the tools and build the skills and build the processes to write better by themselves. And finally, at the end of every writing center or every writing center session, I like to issue a little disclaimer. I basically say, okay, thank you for coming in today. I had a great time working with you. I feel like you made a lot of progress. When you're working on this later by yourself, when you're going over it, if you see something that we did and you decide that you didn't like it after all, or you want to change it back, perfectly feel free, my feelings won't be hurt. It's your writing, it's your piece, you're in charge. I'm just here to help, but do whatever you feel makes the writing the most to you.
There are so many more moves Corby made. I videotaped that session, and he's not kidding, it was about 30 minutes, and then we had to take the 30 minutes and turn it into 30 seconds, which was challenging. But we decided to start that with the end because this is actually a really long story, and it started with what Dr. Will said of this like hope for a place where a wondering, curiosity of what if we had a writing center in our high school? What would it look like? What would it feel like? But even more important, what if our writing center was led by our students? And so those questions, that curiosity was a kernel, that a group of teachers at the high school came together in a study group, and they had that wondering at the core of it. And so we began by spending, this was almost a full school year in a study group examining what the research says about peer editing and what it says about peer tutoring. And that research was really affirming for all the teachers because we believe in that in our practice, it happens in our classroom, and it talks about this idea that peer editing and peer tutoring fosters voice metacognition, that it allows students to impact their, the way they perform in class. So we knew that, and we felt affirmed by that research. We then spent time actually looking for other high schools that actually have student-led writing centers. We found many that were teacher-led, but we only found a few, and there's a growing community of high schools that have student-led writing centers. And we found a local one, as local as Albany is, in Colony, New York, and we reached out to the person who was in charge, and she was great in that she showed us what it could look like, how it works, how she designed it. She introduced us to some of her writing tutors or fellows that we call them here. We then actually reached out to the author of a book that we were reading to try to make sense out of this, and his name is Dr. Richard Kent, and he wrote the book, Student Staffed Writing Centers. And he was excellent in that he told us the how of how to create a writing center, but even more importantly, what Ms. Riley's going to talk about in a minute, the why. Because he said, that's really, you need to have your why, which is something we hold dearly here in Harrison. We know our why, we stand by it. So to hear him say that again was validating. So after all of that, that whole year of exploration, we began to design a plan to launch the writing center. And what you saw Corby just describe took a tremendous amount of time and research and passion and curiosity and wonder that was led by incredible teachers at the high school, by an incredible principal at the high school, and I want to introduce Ms. Lindsay Riley, who can speak more about that why.
As an educator or as educators, we are always in the service of young people, and when an opportunity arises to elevate their voices, to cultivate their agency, it's imperative that we seize it, and creating a student-led writing center is one such opportunity. It's a space where authentic engagement with literacy happens. It's a space where students, the tutors and the writers alike, practice and hone their interpersonal skills, and it's a space where it is possible for the student and the teacher to co-construct knowledge in a truly dialogic manner. I am not the purveyor of all knowledge, nor are the students in that writing center, the passive recipients. Rather, our exploration into what is good writing, what is effective feedback, what it sounds like, what it looks like, what it feels like, is truly collaborative, and the experiences that the students bring to our investigations are just as significant, if not more so, than my own. So it's my honor to introduce two other fellows that we have, Katie Miriani and Faria Ahmed, and they're going to share with you a little bit about their why, why they have chosen to become writing fellows.
You can move to the next slide. Yes. I'm Katie, and I kind of want to bring attention to our mission statement that we all collectively work together, and it's kind of our central belief of the writing center. A little snippet of it is the central mission of the writing center is to promote dialogue about writing and in the process empower students' voices. The Harrison High School Writing Center provides a brave space where all writers are welcome to explore their voices and express their own ideas.
I'm Faria, and I want to kind of talk about how our mission statement continuously reminds me why I choose to be a writing fellow, and some of the main reasons are that I love writing and I want to share my passion and my love for this art with my peers. And as Ms. Riley mentioned previously, like we understand that we are not perfect writers, and we cannot help create perfect writers, but, or we cannot make perfect writers, but we do have the ability to help people develop very important lifelong skills, for example, communication, creativity, and this is shown through writers coming back and telling their friends and other people to come to the center.
And for me, it's probably wondering why we would choose to give up our, for me personally, my lunchtime to go and help these students, and I think it's more the idea that I believe in this student-to-student interaction, and they're not coming in to talk to a teacher, they're coming in to talk to another peer, and we are showing our faces and we're learning them, and we're learning their writing, and they're expressing to us their own creativity through their own writing and their own voice. And not only are we learning, but they're also learning, and I feel like it's so important for us to see all these kids in these areas. And I also think that we see kids from different readiness levels of writing, we see different kids from different levels of where they are, whether they're in the beginning or the end of their writing, and we just help them throughout the entire process. And I think it's so important for us to create that connection because we create this vulnerable space for them because they're ready to show their ideas, even though maybe they're not fully ready, maybe their ideas are not fully developed, we help them to that level, and I think that's the most important thing about this writing center.
So I'm just going to speak kind of briefly about the training that happens. So how do we do this? What does the training look like? We've now gone through two iterations of the training process, and I've landed on what I suppose you could call like a two-pronged approach to laying the foundation for providing effective feedback. The first is empathy building, and as tutors of writing, I implore the students to always remember or to never forget just how risky writing is and how vulnerable the endeavor of sharing your writing is to another person, particularly face-to-face. In order to build this empathy muscle, I ask the students to interrogate their own beliefs about what good writing is, about why they write, and also their own past experiences receiving feedback on their writing. We use the first few training sessions to emphasize that all writers, no matter how adept they may feel that they are at writing, experience some form of anxiety or fear of judgment, and that when we, as tutors of writing, remember just how challenging and dare I say painful writing is, we will be more empathic tutors. And I have to say, the students in the writing center that I'm training, this notion really resonates with them, and I am consistently in awe of the compassion and the humanity that I see them show, the writers who come in to the writing center. And it's something that we talk about, but also there's so much that they do that you can't teach. When given the opportunity to express their compassion, to express their humanity, they step up and they do it. The second approach that I take to lay the foundation for our training is an exploration of the interconnectedness of reading and writing. So we grapple with this connection through the lens of metacognition. And again, this is like within the first week of our training. I ask students to take one of their own pieces of writing and to practice reading it introspectively. Now, introspective reading means becoming conscious of the mental moves you make as a reader and how those moves are elicited by the craft of the author or the writer. So when I ask students to do an introspective reading of their own writing, what I'm asking them to do is to articulate the mental moves they made as a writer in order to effectively communicate their ideas to their audience. For example, a student might say, if they're reading their own writing introspectively, I'm going to use the word however right here because I'm introducing a counterargument. Or they might say, I make a new paragraph right here because I'm changing the setting of the piece, I'm going to use sensory details in order to communicate a mood of gloom. So once they can articulate for themselves the moves that they made as a writer, they can then turnkey that into the strategies that they use as a tutor. And that's really the first almost week of training, and that first week of training kind of culminates in this idea, and it may sound counterintuitive, that as writing tutors, we need not be expert writers, but rather more expert readers. And to that end, I'm going to invite Annalise Serpa up to speak about those more concrete skills that tutors use and the strategies that they use to ask writers to look at their writing a little more deeply.
Over the past two years, being a Over the past two years being a writing fellow, I have acquired a wide range of skills and techniques that I use in every tutoring session to encourage my peers to embrace their writing confidently and reflectively. One of the most critical skills I use in every tutoring session is empathy. From the beginning of my tutoring session to the end, I remind myself that writing is a form of self-expression, and it can be challenging to share one's writing, especially when hearing constructive feedback. That is why using sandwich compliments when pointing out an area of revision in a piece is so important. Framing my feedback so I always begin and end with a compliment towards the writer while also embedding a critique in between, it's not only effective, but it gives the writers a chance to appreciate their writing while also accepting that there's always room for improvement. I also value the questioning techniques I learned in my writing fellow training. Being a writing fellow, I have learned the importance of asking probing questions that push a writer to specifically articulate what it is they are trying to purvey to their readers. By doing so, I have come to realize how to marry reading and writing. By reading someone else's text and answering questions about their text, I have found myself making those same questions when I am reading and revising my own writing. With every tutoring session, I am finding the connection between writing and reading that was not explicit to me before. And honestly, it's amazing the amount of lifelong skills that we writing fellows, we learn with every tutoring session that we're in. And in that time, the 39 minutes that we have in a session, it's a cherished time for us. It's a time where we can listen and I can understand my peers for the first time through their words in their writing. This short period of time, it's my way of seeing my peers as more than faces I've passed in the halls for years without really taking much thought. But in the writing center, it's a way that I can see them as people. They're people with creative minds and growing minds. Working with my, working with my students and my peers, it's so personal and it's so intimate, and it's a beautiful thing to me. Using my peers' writing, it's, I look at it and I think it's so brilliant and it shows me so much about their unique character, and it's honestly one of the best parts of my day. And I have come to recognize that every student in Harrison High School has a story, and I think it deserves to be heard in our writing center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So to build on the ideas that my fellow fellows talked about as they were going over the mission statement and those ideals of inclusivity, we at the writing center hope to see everyone come to our doors at some point because there is no restriction to grade in class. The writing center does a little bit of everything. We do research papers. My favorite research paper that I see every year is the Lemonade Lab. That one's a lot of fun to go over. We do lab reports, we do argumentative essays, literary analysis, creative writing. There's a student who comes in about once a month and he just gives me a check-in, gets me up to date on the book that he's writing. Presentations, speeches, I've had a few people come in for their English IOs where they have to speak for 10 minutes and they go, "Okay, can I run through this one or two times with you?" And I'm like, "Lay it on me." Personal project reports, I've gone over a few college essays and extended essays. I've worked on several of the big IAs that we have to do for the IB. Essentially, if there's words on paper, the writing center can help you with it.
So, I mean, I could just take their word, how incredible the writing center is, but we in Harrison do more than that. We try to, we're always reflective and we try to make sure that we're doing the right work here. So we did survey students, when they leave the writing center after a session, we do ask them questions to find out what's working and what isn't. And I think the most important data point here is that kids come back. So it's not that they just have to come, they come back. Like Corby's serious when he shares the story of a student returning every month to share his novel with him, three times a week. So, and I think that's a testament to the, to these writing fellows, that people want to come to them and share their work and be vulnerable, especially in high school, where the last thing you want to do is ask someone to tell you the truth. And that's what they do, they tell the truth. And so we wanted to end by talking about sort of what Annalise was mentioning before, that not only are they supporting their peers, but they're learning a lot by being fellows. So this is just a quick video that shares the things that they've learned by being a writing fellow.
I learned how to ask big questions.
I learned to be a floor open to my day.
And I think it's an important thing to know what to do, to be able to sit down next to somebody and help them in a constructive manner. And that's a skill that you're very good at, Bill, and Carol, and something that I have been sought out.
I learned how to communicate.
Hi, I'm the writing fellow, and I learned how to be humble, like I'm doing right now.
I learned that students think in all different ways, and it's important to understand each other's thinking.
I learned how to be humble, and I learned that students, you know, are writing, it's always my learning.
I learned how to be friendly with my writing.
I learned to help someone, a student really, who listens, not just hears, they're ears.
Yeah, we're all growing and we're all trying to improve together, and that's what makes the writing center such a great community to be a part of. And it's not just a student that's coming in asking for help that's growing, but it's also the tutors as well.
So we're fortunate enough to have some writing fellows here, so I was hoping you guys could stand, so we can give you guys a round of applause for all, all of your work. And we're really proud of our... Sure.
Oh, yeah. I'm a veteran, I'm also a fellow, I'm a fellow. I'm proud of all of you.
So I know you have questions. We're ready for you.
The people aren't given enough time to grow, they're not given enough support. And what you don't know about Ms. Riley is I know her work really well. She's like a dog with a bone. She has been ferocious about making sure that this program was not only launched, but that it was supported in a way that would give kids a chance to really be successful. So it's your commitment to this work that has made this happen. And I'm really excited for the next few phases because I believe, as an educator, that this is much more significant than a writing center. You know, you talked about the vulnerability or being empathic. And I was an English teacher, Dr. Lidd was an English teacher, Dr. Mulholland was an English teacher, we're all English teachers at heart, aren't we, Leah? Yes, we are. But when you expose your writing, you're exposing yourself. And if a person doesn't feel safe, then the authenticity of what is possible never happens. And so I really think that this changes the culture of a school. You said so beautifully that you see people that you've passed in the hallways differently for all that they can possibly be and imagine. This is such, I wasn't kidding when I said this, I think this is one of the most important things we've ever achieved at the high school level because it is truly students supporting one another. I'd love to know, open question, what is your biggest benefit from being a fellow? Do you have a story? Do you have a moment? Was there an aha where you said, "Wow, this made me feel good, bad, I learned something"? Yeah, stand right up and yell it out, because if you don't, Mr. Nichols is going to make you come to that microphone.
Do I come to that?
Yeah, come on up.
So while I was listening to my fellow peers present their speeches here and talk about, like, what it is that we do, and while I was listening to Ms. Riley, I was just like thinking about and reflecting about, like, the moment when the writer realizes all the potential they actually have within themselves. Like, you can see it in their eyes that just by having you right there and like, because like, all of the work that we do, like Corby said, I'm not telling them the answers. Like, writing is not something that there is one answer, it's a form of human expression, as everybody else has made it very clear. But I think it's so beautiful to me because like, it's like human connection. Like you said, it's more about the writing center. For me, like, in that moment, I'm learning how to put myself in that person's shoes, which is a basic skill, or like a skill in life that will like matter whether I'm in the writing center now or not. Like, I'll always have like all that training that I did with me. And like, so when I'm tutoring someone, like, I learn to like switch gears or switch my mind and like connect with them on a different level. But at the same time, within themselves, they're growing and they're like looking into themselves and getting their ideas out. And like, I've had times where like, I've seen the person that I've like tutored like after, like outside the writing center, and they tell me like, "Oh, like, you're so good at this, you're so good at that." And I tell them, "No, like, all that work was you, that was your potential, you, I just, I was there to like guide you, but it was all you, all that you did." And I think that it's really beautiful that we get the opportunity to experience that, and it's something that I'll have with me like all, all of my life.
Thank you, that was a beautiful answer. We have people crying, but that's okay.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Behind you, crying over you.
Anybody else before we, yeah, come on up. The board generally gets hard, hard work, so you guys are just kind of a little bit of a break for them.
Hi, my name is Ella. I just wanted to say, similar to what Giselle said, is that I had a moment, I think, a couple of months ago where this girl came in and she was working on a personal project. And she came in with this really great story, and it was about loss and grief, and it was so interesting, but she didn't really have anything that was really like to the heart of what the emotion was. And so I kept kind of asking her questions, and I was like, "So what were you feeling now?" And asking kind of some of those probing questions. And there was just a moment where she was like, "Oh, my gosh, I know what I'm talking about." And there was just like a light bulb that completely switched. And we just kind of sat there for a second, kind of looking at each other, and I was like, "Okay." And then she started furiously writing, and she was like, "Okay." And she was like, "Okay, I need to write this, this, and this." And so she started writing comments to herself, and she just went on this whole like train of thought that she had not had before. And I just knew in that moment, like, she did that herself, but there was something that I had said that had helped her in some way. And since then, the way I do my writing sessions has completely changed. Like, I use those questions so much more, and I think that that was just such an important experience for me to have. I think that was an important experience for her to have because now she knows some of those questions that she can ask herself. And I just thought that was a really cool moment that was able to happen. And also, I just wanted to say that Corby completely inspired me to become a writing fellow. He is the only reason that I signed up. I had a session with him last year, and he was absolutely amazing.
I agree.
And he helped me so, so much with my writing. And so then this last year, when the time came and Mr. Bro was like, "Hey, do you want to be a writing fellow?" I was like, "Oh, my gosh, I can do what Corby does?" And he was like, "Yeah." And I was like, "This is amazing." But I think there's such a community within the writing fellows themselves. Like, we're able to support the writers who come in, but we're also able to support each other. Like, we see each other in the hallway, and we wave and we smile, and it's like, "Oh, are you a writing fellow?" It's like, "Yeah, I am too." Like, it's just a moment of connection, it's like we, we feel each other. And I think that's really cool. Like, I have some freshmen who have been texting me, and they're like, "Oh, are you a writing fellow? Do you think I should do it?" And I'm like, "Yes, you should." And yeah, I just think it's a cool community, and I'm really lucky to be a part of it.
Thank you for that story. Well, before we close for the night, just a couple of observations. I spent most of my career as an English teacher, trying really hard to help kids find their voice. I just think that this program is so much more than helping you find your voice, you're helping other kids find their personal voice. And the amount of trust that it takes to be able to do that, to create a space that feels welcoming enough for kids to be that vulnerable, is a credit to everyone, but especially to our high school, that it feels okay to do that. I also just want to observe, wouldn't it be wonderful if the world behaved like the writing center? That if we started with empathy for one another and the ability to listen without judgment, maybe the writing center has more to do with life than anything we could ever imagine. So, one more? Oh, come on up.
Hi, I'm actually not a writing fellow. I actually, you know, volunteer every time. In lunch, I would go sit, and I usually go to the writing center every day. And sometimes I would ask for help. And I think one thing they all, like, all these writing fellows have done for me is they really helped me get comfortable of asking questions and asking for help. And I feel like that this program really helped get people feel comfortable asking for help with their writing, and I feel like that can help them in the future ask for help they need. It also impacted me to, you know, feel safe in an environment. It's, this, the writing center has always been a safe environment I could always go to. And as a girl who suffers from anxiety, it took me a lot to go and ask for help. I think Ms. Riley, she's my English teacher, and she actually was saying to our class that we should go and get help for our writing if we needed it. And it was very nerve-wracking, I think. It was very hard for me to go. And when I went, I realized it was actually really nice. It helped me to ask questions, it helped me to fix my structure, my grammar, my writing. It helped me so much. And I feel like, I think these writing fellows like have to understand, they help kids so much. I would listen to my friends saying, "Actually, this is actually really helpful." Like, I tell them, like, I tell my friends, like, "Go to the writing center." I've convinced, like, I convinced so many people because it's so nice to just stay there, not even getting help, but just to see how these people learn and how they've been trained to help others with their writing. And it's just been an amazing place to be.
Thank you for sharing.
And just kind of proof that this is, this is happening.
You'll be our proof tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You want to take a break, or you want to just... So you do it. Yeah. So we're going to take a five-minute break so that we can come out and say hello and thank you for coming.
Moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Three, extra compensation appointment. Four, change of status. Five, leave of absence without pay. B, non-certificated personnel. One, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, extra compensation appointment. C, other. One, contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, adoption of revised policies, number 6121. Workplace sexual harassment, number 7440. Student voter registration and preregistration, number 7522. Concussion management, number 7530. Child abuse and maltreatment, number 8300. Curriculum and instruction materials, and number 8490. Textbook loan to non-politic students. B, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, 5th grade. C, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA. D, acceptance of donation from Lisa Newworth. E, approval of CSE/CPSE minutes. F, approval of CSE/CPSE recommendations. G, approval of CSE/CPSE annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to give a big thank you to the Samuel J. Preston 5th grade PTA, the Harrison Ave School PTA, and the donation from Lisa Newworth for their generous donations.
Madam President, while we're thanking, I forgot during that presentation, Lisa Mulholland reminded me, but I didn't see it, that the furniture for the writing center was donated last year by the Harrison Educational Foundation.
Oh.
Just another thank you.
Yes.
And another example of the great work that they do.
Great, good call. Yes, thank you, all around. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, amendment to construction management agreement. A, amendment to construction management agreement. B, disposal of equipment. C, disposal of equipment. D, contract for health services, New Rochelle City School District. E, resolution of appointment volunteer drivers. F, treasurer's report, January 2024. G, authorization to piggyback on Southampton Public Schools bid award for stage curtain, rigging inspection, cleaning and repairs. H, Southern Westchester Bosse's cooperative bidding. Oh, there's more? Okay, thank you. Aye. 2023-24 appropriation transfers. J, approval of deduct change order. H, VAC upgrades Parsons Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on March 20, 2024. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.